We had nine that accepted. I don't see the six here so far. I know we have two that had issues come up. And I'm the county judge, if you don't know that. And I serve as the non-voting chairman of the grievance committee. So I'm here to assist you, to help you out, and let you know what it is you have to do. I'm gonna call the row real quick. Kayla Williams. Dr. Coe. Martha Ramirez. Blake Daniel Sylvia the second. He's that good-looking kid. Looks like me when I was that age. Look at the hair and all. Marie Ryan?
No.
Amy Lee. Kevin Gallandre. Katie Stubbs. And Juan Shaw Mercer. I guess she got married. Yeah, Juan Mercer. Okay, so for the record, we have, well, we're not that good, but we have six of the nine committee members that have accepted to be on to serve on the salary of grievance committee. Everyone got a packet, correct? Okay, so what we provided to you was salaries of all elected officials. Actually, two that were posted. First was no increase for any elected official. And then the next one posted was eventually approved in court. Was thirty-seven fifty for all elected officials. And we also have a job, the grievance law, job description for the justice of the peace's, letters from elected officials, and a notice of the public hearing. And there will probably be some more things provided to you today by whoever speaks. I know. Okay, I know the JP's have a presentation for you. So what we're gonna do is the JP's are gonna make their presentation, any of them, all of them, one of them, however they wanna do it. So this is what was given, and this is a public hearing, and I'm gonna open it up for comments from any of the public members. After that, after everybody testifies, we're gonna move across the hall into conference room. And I have ballots for you to, you can either approve what they requested, or approve no increase, or anywhere between zero and thirty-seven fifty. Basically, the ballots I will provide for you. And it's different ballots. You know, you can treat it however you'd like to treat it, but all doesn't say, you know, you have to have a, it's not like a jury. So you can just write it down, and whatever you want, your discussions, once you give up your jury. Okay? Any questions? And I do wanna tell you, one of the hardest things we do as commissioners of court is set our salaries and set the salaries of other elected officials for our hearings every year. It's very, very difficult. Okay, JP's. Larry, you speaking for JP's?
I think they've asked me to. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
They may still speak, but...
That's fine.
We're just gonna...
If you wanna start it off...
Okay. If, I do have a couple of questions about the ones that aren't here. If you could tell us before we start why they're not here, because it's, obviously, everybody can see that everything balances on the number present. So can you give us why, why they're not here? Health reasons, or can you do that?
One of them was the mother. One of them was...
One mother was going to take her kid, first day of school or college, or they had to do something with them.
And then the other one, I don't know. We didn't hear from the third one.
We only heard from two.
Ma'am?
We only heard from two. We didn't hear from the third one.
Yeah. We didn't hear from the third one.
Okay. What I'd like to do for you is introduce the judges, if you don't know them. And then I'll do this presentation, it's very short, but it just explains where we're at, and why we ask you to come up here, and the very fact of why the law allows this hearing. It's important, and you being here is important. Nine people here is even more important. But the fact is, you have weight as a person for us tonight to hear what we have to say, or what I have to say for the group, however they decide to handle it, before we're finished. There is a disagreement while we're here, obviously. We don't understand, I don't know, I was unaware you were getting a package, so I have no idea what you've read or what you've seen. I would like to methodically go through this, if I can, and I'll be brief as possible to go through there. But I'd like to introduce the judges. Judge Vander Viner, if you'll rise. You wanna come to us?
I'm Randy Vander Viner.
I'm Yale Devere. Justice of the peace, precinct one.
He's from Winnie.
Tracy Woody.
Tracy Woody, from Smith Point. Bob Wallace. And I'm over on 146, I'm in precinct six.
Judge Blake Sylvia.
Oh, I'm sorry, right behind him. I got out of my sight.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Anyhow.
As per the record, you can tell Blake is my brother.
I didn't know that. That's a news to me.
And one of the commissioners, Commissioner Doris Danny Law, is also a deputy, a small captain.
What I did, Judge, prior to you coming in the room, I went around and made sure as they came in, and just made a, so we could address them by their last names if we need to do that. And I just made a diagram here of the list, and then of their name, so we could address them on their face. There is a, I'll move right into this. This presentation is just about eight or nine slides to try to get you where we're at, and why we disagree with what happened. And it comes down to the money factor and the work factor. Back in the middle of last year, the sheriff and the county attorney went to Austin. I don't know the date. I wouldn't prove it to that. But they were able to persuade the legislature to allow this county, the justice of the peace, to be added to the list of people because of our side, to be able to do blood warrants from people that are stopped by the Department of Public Safety. When they're stopped, they have an option, as you probably have heard, you know. But the one that we wanna talk about is the one we're involved in. They can refuse everything. They can refuse to walk, they can refuse to blow, but the blood warrant has to be issued by a magistrate in the state, and they have to be approved magistrates in the state, in the county where you're at. Now, this has fingers to all of it. What I mean by that is outreachy, so I'm gonna try not to get off into all that, just try to keep it on the sharp, so you can see our disagreement in about what we're here for. If you refuse the other things, and the officer now has the option in this county, and I'll give you a number already, since the middle of last year, and I'm gonna tell you who's done all the work so far, because of the way it came out. There's been about, I'm gonna estimate now seventy-two, I believe, seventy-two blood warrants done since last year, and that was with three people. At the time, just Judge Blake Sylvia was the one doing them, because he was equipped first through the county attorney's office with the computer for that very reason. So then...
I started at the beginning.
Oh, you started. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. Okay. Yale from Winnie, he's done them. I've done a few, very few. The fact is that those blood warrants are not refusable, and people don't realize that. It's a great tool in the enforcement division of the Department of Public Safety, along with the city of Baytown, city of Mount Bellevue, DPS. All them now have that. Anything that comes within our borderlines of Chambers County, Baytown, city of Baytown has a section over on 146 where they have DWIs. They're prosecuted here, not in Harris County, because they've fallen out of that into Chambers County. So they come into our county, and then if they arrest them, then they have the right to call on us to do that. Now, when we first started, I'm gonna be, just kinda be random here about some thoughts. When we first started, they had the option to call who was on the list. There was only three of us. And I was much fortunate not to even get on it till May 1st, before I ever got equipped and got on the list. Blake and Judge Yale, they caught most of the flak, and I think the majority of the number I gave you earlier were done by them. So then the loads between what we do, and let me explain to you just a little bit about our job. Our job is already daytime job, and then we have night calls all the time for deaths. As you know, the JP's in this county, because of its population, we handle with a coroner by law in this county. We're not doctors, we don't do autopsies. We send those off to Beaumont. We used to send them to Harris County, but now, that's what we already do. Takes up many, many nights, many, many times. So where some of the confusion, to lead you into this, that brought us to the point tonight, is the fact that we have time consumption. And as a county's grown like it has, you're also on the bench during the day for trials, civil, criminal. We're on the bench for that. So we have those things that we have to, and I'll show you that on slide, just briefly, to show you some of our obligations to the county under election. And we have callouts for warrants at night for people that need to go to jail, that there's serious crimes, murder, armed robbery, and those kind of things. So I'm giving you, just trying to give you a little globe of the time sequence we work on a twenty-four-hour basis. This started last year. Now, that is now on top of that. Now, let me make this clear to you upfront. We all do blood warrants if we're asked to. It's the nighttime sector that our disagreement's over with the commissioners' court, okay? And it's about the funding of what we had asked for. You saw a magic number in there, thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. It may be in your package, I guess it is. That number...
I've got a copy of their grievance.
Okay.
Your grievance.
Okay.
Your grievance.
That number didn't just come out of the sky, and when I say it didn't come out of the sky, I met with Jimmy, Judge Sylvia, in his office, and he said, hey, after we come to our budget hearing this year, we said, could we, he asked me, he said, could we, after we told him what we had in mind, everybody's been doing this for no extra income from all the going's on. So he said, could you work on that? So I said, sure. So I left, and we sit down, and we tried to formulate something we thought was fair with the public, and that would keep one judge on call three hundred and sixty-five days, or nights a year. One judge, not all of us, just one of us at a time, and we rotate all that list. So we figured, two hours a night, if you're called. Now, remember, I'm not trying to tell you we get calls every night, because we don't, okay? We could get three a night. I think Judge Sylvia's had three, maybe four, in one night. But that's, that time to get up and take care of that, it's hard to go back to sleep, okay? And it's not, it's Friday night. It always happens on a night where you gotta be in court the next morning, or whatever. So here we are, going along, taking care of that, and then, and we come up with this formula. And what it amounted to is this. I'm really getting ahead of this, but I wanna just keep talking, because I want you, you're being very attentive, and I want you to see where I'm going. We said two hours was fair enough when you got a call. And all we asked for, to be paid for, was one call. If we get more than one call at night, we're not asking for that at all. So that's, that's the point of the fee, if you saw it in there, the two hours at about thirty-one dollars an hour, which is sixty-something dollars for a night, when you're on call only, nobody else. The daytime, that just comes with our job. We're not asking to be paid extra for that. It's to do that night work. So if you take that formula and look at it, and multiply that by three judges, when we started out, it was three judges, seventy-five hundred dollars a year, okay? Which made it twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, is what it came out to be for the total year. Then Judge Jimmy called around, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think he called all the judges and said, hey, are y'all gonna get in on this or not? Is that correct, Judge? Is that close?
An email, a call, something like that.
Anyway, everybody wanted in, wanted to be part of this. So the judges are here, if you disagree with that, well, now's the time to speak up. You okay with that? So we said, okay, we're not gonna change the twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. We're not gonna do that. We'll just reduce the night you're on call, if you're already one of the three. So now it's divided by six, and so that reduced the amount each judge would get. It cuts it in half. We had three, we added three, cut the amount in half. So that's how that magic number of thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars came up. And that's what we brought back to the court in writing, and introduced it to them. And then, in a hearing, here in this courtroom, they talked amongst themselves about it, and I don't know what they talked about, it's not really, that part wasn't my business. But the point was, somewhere in there, they decided, because they had made some prior agreement about giving none of the elected officials a raise this year, that they couldn't do that. That was a decision at the time. And they can correct me about that, but I believe that's how it happened. So we walk along, and we come back in for the hearing, and talk about it again, and they decide, well, if we're gonna do that, we're just gonna give everybody selected in the county thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. We were here for one thing, and that was to be paid for doing a new job that we hadn't had before at night. That's all we were asking for, was the thirty-seven fifty for each of the six judges to be paid to do that job. So then the next thing that we hear officially, because we don't call back and forth about this, we heard that they were gonna give thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars to all elected officials. And then we found out that that didn't include us as elected officials. So we're still in limbo tonight, in limbo, of whether we were given thirty-seven fifty to do the night work, which the other people are getting thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars raise, for no add-on, no night work, their jobs don't require it, okay? There's where the problem arose between all of us, okay? That thirty-seven fifty, if you're giving it to us for doing the blood warrants, then we got taken out of the picture, and so you can't say all thirty-seven, all elected officials got it. We didn't get that. We only got what we were asking for, to work the nights, one judge at a time, on a shift. Now, to get off that subject a minute, let me say this. You can imagine in your mind, if you know anything about court, DWI trials, or any of that, you can imagine the cost to prosecute one person, to go through the system for a DWI case. It's a ton of money. And all the people, starting with the officer who stops the person, okay? Remember, those people are on duty. They're on their shift, and then they go home. One of the things the JP's don't get to do, we get to go home, but we may not get there very long, and we're gone again, okay? That's what we want you to appreciate, and appreciate your support in tonight, as a citizen of this county, okay? We're not trying to say nobody else cares about that. All we're trying to do is bring to light why we think we're entitled to thirty-seven fifty, like all the others got that are elected in the county, okay? And then the thirty-seven fifty that we actually came up with the number, thirty-seven fifty, for that extra work. None of the others are required, nor should they be required to do night work if their job doesn't call for it. But this is something new to us, it's something that wasn't in our job, and we're just asking to be compensated for what we're being asked to do. And I hope I've made that as pretty clear, anyhow, to you. Can I, any questions from you about that, or those numbers that we asked for?
If they have a question, yes, we'll ask questions if they'd like to.
Okay. Would you like to ask any questions from me, or any of the judges? Or anything about this DWI situation? It's important to all of us, and you all know that. Taking care of our highways and byways is a dangerous, dangerous situation. I'll give you a quick example. If you go to the DPS office, and look at the wrecked cars behind the DPS office right now, they're DPS cars, you know how they all got wrecked? They were hit by an officer already on either a DWI stop, or on a wreck call, or crash, they call it now, and they were ran over, ran over by DWI drivers. I think they've haul some of those vehicles off now, back to Austin. But this is serious to our families, very serious to our families. This step in being able to take blood warrants does many, many things. And I could go on for an hour about that or not. About how the prosecution and the step of the blood warrant, anybody that knows, it doesn't lie. It tells you not only what's in their system, but everything that's in their system, for prosecution's sake. And it can enhance DWIs. As you know, if you don't, I'll bring it up, Judge Jimmy is the front end of the train for DWIs, as far as the courts go. The sheriff's department, PEs, DPS, they all work, the wrecks and the DWI. His court is the first timeout for DWIs, unless it's a death DWI, and then it could jump from him right on into district court, you know, because of the severity of it. And I'm not trying to tell him the law, I'm just trying to get you briefed on the law, to the best that I can. So you have him, with all those trials coming in, there's nothing more frustrating to us as judges, in my opinion, to see a loophole happen in a case that's so obvious that it's obvious. And then somebody walks away from a DWI case, especially an injury accident, because of something that went wrong. And this blood DWI business is serious business. I mean, it's your fingerprints, technically, on everything that happened in that particular situation, so. Any questions? Let me get this pointer here, now that I ran all over this presentation, and see if I can look through here. That's just some of the things here that, the legislation, which is directly related to Judge Hawthorne, and to Scott Peel, the county attorney, that they went up there, you can see it, they, they're responsible, in my opinion. If you know different judges, please, pray on.
And the reason JP's could not do it before is, if you had a judge who was an attorney other than a district judge in your county, then the JP's could not do it, and it could have. But they got it changed, so that they could do that. We had a district court judge, I mean, a municipal judge in Baytown, who had jurisdiction in Chambers County, that she was an attorney. That's what we couldn't do it, and the sheriff hadn't, and the county attorney went and got this changed, so that we could go ahead.
And that was a big deal, believe it or not. Other counties, I don't think they're gonna have the, are we, we gonna, oh, they can see it better than what you did? Can you see it now? We were blindin', I'm sorry. Anyhow, let me see if I can walk all over this thing, and you go to the next one. I've already told you both those items, as I was speaking. We didn't particularly ask for raising the budget year, this year, ourselves, prior to this problem coming up, or the situation coming up. All we, most of it asked for is, if they gave a percentage raise across the board to all employees, that's what we would like to have had. That gives you an idea about that particular thing. And again, the disagreement over the compensation was, is being able, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, having a judge ready in the middle of the night for anybody that... There you go.
Thank you, sir.
So...
It was that glare that was getting everybody.
Now, in a moment, if you wish, I have those in my briefcase. Everybody that's on the committee, in the court, a copy of what's up here. I didn't hand them out a while ago, because I didn't wanna confuse you with trying to read it while I'm trying to talk, and I'm a little unorganized when it comes to that, I think this statement, you will see in a minute on a newspaper ad that we scanned in, that the commissioners' court, as you can see there, even agreed they thought we should be compensated for that. And you say, well, were you compensated, or why aren't we talking about this? Well, again, I think I slashed, I pointed up a while ago, we don't know if it's for the blood warrants, or if we got the same raise as everybody else got, we don't know. We think we're entitled to both of them. That's really why we're here. So that was in the Seabreeze News there, and I'll go to that there. I don't know if you can read that, it's pretty tough. Can somebody read that? Do you have good enough eyes you can read that? If not, I'll give you, oh, you already got them out? Okay. You read it.
I'll give you the ad.
Well, it's just the point there, all it is, is a synopsis of that. Just simply said the court agreed, they agreed in our hearing, the court agreed in our hearing, that they thought we should be compensated. So what we're doing here tonight is asking you to listen to this, and then see if you agree, all of you agree with, that we feel like, that we were entitled. That was a separate issue. That was working a shift nobody else was working. That's what we were asking to be paid for. And then the thing came up, that they had made a prior promise, the court had made a prior promise last year, they wouldn't give any more, like I told you earlier, any more raises, this year, for elected officials. They would do it maybe next year. So then they said, if we're gonna give y'all a raise for this, we're gonna have to give everybody a raise. And it's on record, it was on record. I disagreed with that at the time. Some disagreed with us getting anything, but the fact still was, I disagree with that on record, that I didn't see, what logic is that? But that's me, okay? The logic of that, I couldn't figure out. Why do you do that? Okay? So, that's in this, yes?
Would you like to hand them a copy of that?
Ah, it's in there. Oh, what's that? I'm not sure that...
It's got a copy of that article in there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Here, take this one too, because I got plenty of them.
I think there's plenty.
That's not what I wanna give y'all later. It's this, is that?
There's a copy of that article in that, do you have enough?
Yep. You can look in there on that page, I don't think there are a number of them.
I think it's next to the last page.
Next to the last page? It's just a mindset, we want you to see, that everybody was on the same level, thinking process, at the time, we felt like. So I haven't been able to talk to anybody, I didn't think it was appropriate for me to talk to anybody on the court about this. This is why we're here. We have an attorney in the back that already knows this, he's read it. You may have read it, and understand the grievance process, and what it comes down to.
They got a copy of the law.
Okay. I'm not gonna go into it anymore then. Let me go through these slides again, see what else here we've got, if I can get it to move. And there was original request I popped out a while ago, and gave you verbally on the screen. You see now, the formula for what we did. And that's where the thirty-seven fifty came from, through your information. This was the original letter that we put in, I don't think you can see that very well, but it has three judges' names at the bottom. That would be Judge Blake, I'm Judge Devere, and then Judge Sylvia and myself. At the time, and that's when we said seventy-five hundred dollars each, would still come out to twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. We stayed with that number, we just took less and less as we broke it, like I told you earlier. So we broke it down. And these are some of the things we do, and that's why I bring it up, is about our daytime responsibility, civil court, criminal court, up to ten thousand dollars, and then class C misdemeanors in all phases, games, fights, game warden cases, traffic tickets, fights, everything. And we preside, of course, over all the other things you see there in that list. The reason I'm actually bringing that up, and the judges and I have talked about this, these are some that take a lot of time. Give you an example, number three on this list, mental health warrant. Three o'clock, Sunday night, got a call. Somebody was at the emergency center on Highway 146, and they called, and they wanted us to help them commit them. The problem was, they had already... The problem was, they had already, the reason I'm gonna tell you this real quick is because it took three hours and we got nothing accomplished, but it still took three hours of that night. So, the, half of it was in Harris County, the people living in Harris County, they brought him out here barely in Chambers County, they did all the paperwork, they sent it to the JP's over there that have night phones at their homes for that, and then they had to, they had to dump it because it was out of the jurisdiction, and we tried to get them to it. I think, I think Judge Sylvia wound up the next morning, sometime the next morning, he went over and took them and committed them because we, out of our tone, we have to send them to Beaumont, we can't send them where you want, we have to send them over there. So the end of that story. It's just talking about nights and the time, and then the inquest you see next to the last, are, they, they seem to never happen, if you know what I mean, in your business day. They always happen after you're home or at nighttime, so. The blood benefits from the blood warrants, as we said earlier, are, they, they really clear the results for prosecution. I'm, I'm not here advocating, somebody plead or not plead, that's not the point, the judge isn't either, neither of these judges, the point simply is, an attorney that comes in to represent somebody, okay? He's got his hands full when he's got a blood warrant on a DWI. Don't need to say anymore about that, I think you can pre, pre all the lines on that. But there's no, juries have to be called, none of that would have to do if they come in here on the, before the judge or before the district judge and they plead out, all that time and money saved, all those jurors up here in the courthouse having to pay them and them being inconvenienced, and things we don't need to do today, you may saw in the news lately, we do not, we do not want to do anything to irritate jurors. We, we are down, we called 150 this weekend, one day in my court, we got 29 or 31 people for jury trials, and what, what can we do without jurors? Zero. We can't move forward at all. And that position he's put in as well in this court. So the monies, the monies that are saved, I don't know how to figure that. We've talked about it, we, we yellow padded it, it, it adds up quickly because of all the people that get involved by, by slowing it down with blood warrants. It's harder to defend a case, and it's not about winning or losing, it's about stopping people from driving drunk and/or under the influence, and a lot of people get mistaken on that, under the influence sometimes has nothing to do, it can be pills or other things other than alcohol that causes major accidents that kill people. But by the blood warrant and the support to do blood warrants by the officers and the hospitals, the county has contracted with a hospital here, I think in Winnie too, maybe, and over there at the place I just mentioned earlier, I think they take bloods if we ask them. But we've driven over here at night lately to the hospital when our computers were down and meet the DPS here, and give them the signed warrants so they can pull the blood from the people, they don't like it, but they're gonna get their blood taken, there's no option out of it. Can't file a bond, or, you know, take off, you're gonna get your blood drunk, and it's going to the lab and we're gonna know what happened. Anyhow, back to this, and I'm gonna bring it to a, a quick halt here, I have many pages of things I'd like to discuss with you, but we're, we're asking for your support and by your vote in, in our endeavor tonight to get paid to do all that. And, and again, remember, we're talking about one judge on call, we, we will have alternate judges in case that judge is gone sick or whatever, somebody's gonna step right in that judge's shoes that night temporarily, but they go back. And one other quick note, we, we all work the jails on weekends and holidays, Judge Van de Venner used to do all the jail, and the court helped us out on that, gave us a little, a little fees for that, or more fees for that, to where we all do that. So now what we do, say, say Judge DeVillier works Saturday and Sunday, and Monday's a holiday, he works all those three days, but starting at midnight on Friday night, he's got the blood warrants now, okay? He works the blood warrants on through the weekend and all the way to the next Friday, okay? He's, he's got that many nights in a row on call. And that's a big factor if you woke up very many times in that seven day period, plus working the jails. So you get a little bit more idea about our time consumption. So, I would like to say that I, I am gonna stop talking and I may come around and hand those packages out, because I'm sure plenty others are gonna wanna talk. Judge, I don't wanna try to run anymore of your meeting, I already have, if you want, you won't let them speak, or if they want any of them to speak?
Yeah, flip those lights on. Eric, you can get wherever you got to pass out, we're passing out.
Okay.
Eric, you, wherever the judge is. All right, so is there any other JP's that would like to address this salary grievance committee?
I think you've explained everything.
Yeah, I think you covered it.
Give me back, I'll give it to the judges. I want to tell you how much I appreciate the chance to at least speak about it, we just appreciate your support, even after you hear whatever there is to be heard, to consider what we're trying to do here.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Judge.
Judge, one.
Okay, so if there's no other JP's that would like to speak, this is a public area, I'll open up the public, so anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Oh, yeah. I'll get it anyway.
Yeah, you can use that.
I told him how to do it.
How do you get, how do you get paid?
Garrett, this is Commissioner Nelson, my belt is Commissioner, Commissioner Smack, and Commissioner, I think City, Commissioner Gore, Winnie, and Mr. George, who does COVID and COVID. Okay.
As I said, I'm one of the members of the court, I'm one of the members, that's my duty, what I'm elected to do is the budget once a year. I know all these guys, I have nothing against any of them, I, I feel like they're my friends, but we also have to handle the money, and this is what we do. When we passed the budget, or when we originally set the deal, the way we did that, Commissioner George is gonna address this in a minute, was we based, the salaries based on the elected, the district judges, and our state only meets once every two years, so the district judge's salary is not gonna change, it may change the next time they, they meet, but it's not gonna change. That's why we went for the two-year deal. When we did that two years ago, that percentage was based on what those district judges made that was set by that legislature. But anyway, if you read this article, I have this article too, I have the paper, and it says Commissioners' Court gives itself a raise. Now you have to read the article to know what we did, but it appears by reading the title that we did it after we said we weren't gonna do anything for two years. Our first ad in the paper, we don't, I mean, we don't play in a game, we're not playing a game here, we actually posted the, the salaries of, for a two-year period. And that's when we, they came to us about the blood warrants. We considered it, we said no, we said we were gonna do a two-year deal last year, so we stuck with it, and we posted that salary posting. Well, county attorney came to us, the district judges, one of the district judges came to us, the sheriff, they all came and said, "We really need those blood warrants, it's really important to have the evidence so it's gonna, it makes the trials easier." So, we reconsidered. Okay, the 37.50 is a number. We looked at it, we put it in the JP's salary, we had, the constables requested $1,800 stifling for their certification, or stifling for their Masterpiece Officer license. If they had all their license, there was an $1,800 stifling for that, which we pay the sheriff, and we also pay the deputies over at the jail. We considered that. County clerk asked for another $1,800 because she does the elections, as a stifling separate from herself. But when I got to looking at the numbers, and the 37.50 would raise the JP's over a countywide elected official, which is your treasurer, your district clerk, and your county clerk, except for the stifling, and the what's that?
Tax assessor.
And the tax assessor collective. Those four elected, those are countywide elected officials, and I felt like it was not right for a precinct official to make more than a countywide elected official. I said, "Well, we can't do that." So, the next thing we did, I mean, we're all, we're deliberating this in court, well, let's raise everybody's, I mean, let's raise those elected officials 30, 30, 37.50, and that'll keep the separation there. Well, Larry said, "No, I don't think we can vote for that." Of course, he's going off the court, but I mean, he, not that that has anything to do with it, but he said, "No, I, I don't think we need to do that." So, you could see where we were, well, I said, "We'll give the constables the 1,800, and we'll, we'll do that," and we still, I think we were around 37,000 what it was gonna cost us. And that didn't go over, and, and sometimes when we're deliberating, we get frustrated, and I think the judge says, "Okay, this is what we're gonna do, everybody's gonna get 37.50, let's, let's move on." So, we came to, that's the agreement we came to, and that's how that number came up.
And we posted that.
We posted it.
Yeah.
But, the number started with the JP's, that's where we got that number from. It wasn't planned, the plan was we weren't gonna do anything for any elected official, that was the original thought. And then we went back and said, "Okay, we do this," but I didn't think it was right that a precinct official made more than a countywide official. I mean, if you run countywide, you got, you got elections all over the county, you just run in a precinct, you just have that one precinct to run in. We have six JP's, a lot of counties only have four, some have five, we have six, and we're a small county. I know that they get called out, they indicate that we never get called out, we do, the dispatch has our numbers, when we have, when we rent these buildings and stuff, and key doesn't work, or fire alarm goes off, they call us. I mean, it's, all elected officials have duties, the sheriff gets called out, we all have times that we're called out, we're, when we take this oath of office, we do, we do it for, you know, we're 24/7 just like them, it's just a little different. Commissioner Smack's gonna talk about the different salary levels, Commissioner George is gonna say something about how he came up with this formula, and the other thing, only one other thing I have that I'd like to pass out, is the benefit package that we've got, I got one, the total, the total number at the bottom of that line is, is consistent with all the benefits that we have as far as our annual, annual pay. So, that's all I have for you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's all right, I'll sit right by my lawyer.
Okay.
Well, she's gonna have a choice.
What do you think?
I might be too big.
All right, thanks.
I guess I'm, I'm up, yeah, if you wouldn't mind doing that.
Can I reserve a right to speak again at the end? Thank you.
Yeah. Y'all wouldn't mind.
Greatly.
I do.
It's not my mental right.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, I'm Rusty Smack, I'm the county commissioner, and actually I'm retiring December 31st, I'm sitting with Larry George, so I've been a commissioner for eight years now, I've enjoyed it, I'm friends with all of these guys back here, and it's, it's truly team Chambers as far as working, everybody works together, the blood warrants themselves are important just as the sheriff's office deputies are, as the justice system, the county attorney, the prosecutors, I mean, everybody works together to, to make this whole thing happen. And we appreciate our JP's, they do a good job for Chambers County, they do a good job for you as taxpayers. And, but one of the things that we, we get concerned about, something that we do look at, are the salaries of other counties that are a like size or light budgets, and, and we think that's, that helps to make a fair assessment of what, what people earn. So there's a, there's an organization called Texas Association of Counties, TAC, and it was formed about 50 years ago, as a matter of fact, and they publish a salary survey every year, well, every two years, I guess, but this is the 2018 salary survey, and it's, it has all of the elected officials that you typically see in a county, from county judge to commissioners, district clerks, county clerks, constables, sheriffs, tax assessor collectors, who name it. In Texas, we have 254 counties, not all of them participate, but the counties report this information to TAC, and they summarize it. And it's a wonderful resource for counties to be able to look at what we're doing and what other counties are doing, and they provide a lot of information that, that helps us to make good apples-to-apples comparisons. So, the table that I handed out to you includes information from the 2018 salary, and if these are seven counties that have similar budgets to Chambers County, it's, if you take the Chambers County budget for 2018, plus or minus 10%, that's who these seven, seven counties represent. I always think of Chambers County as being a sort of a small county, but we're really not. If you lay out the population of counties, of all 254 counties, the largest is Harris County with, with over 4 million people there, the smallest is Loving County, it's up in the Panhandle, it has less than 100 people population. But once they elect everybody, I think the whole county actually, oh, everybody in the county probably works for the county somehow or another. So, but that's a big range, from, from 80-something people to, you know, four to six million people, so it's pretty big. But Chambers County is, is about median, we're about in the middle of that. And I was surprised the first time that I, that I saw that information. So, what we thought we would do is to poll counties who have similar budgets, plus or minus 10% of the Chambers County budget. And I know that, I know it's busy, but if you just look down at Row 13 and just sort of follow across with me, what, what it's gonna show is that our, our budgets, the Chambers County budgets compared to these, are really, if you look at the averages, we're about equal, so we're, we're really about the same, Chambers County's the same as the seven counties. And if you look at the populations, though, the populations of those seven counties are about twice the population of, of Chambers County. So, if you look at the number of JP's, Commissioner Nelson mentioned earlier about some counties have four, five, six, Harris County actually has more than that as well because of the size of the population. And, so we have six, and I'll, I'll have to get Judge Sylvia sometime to explain to you how that came about, but that required an amendment to the Texas Constitution for Chambers County to have six JP's, and it was voted on by the entire state of Texas and was passed many years ago. It's an oddity, but I'll let him try to tell you what that story is. So we have six JP's. There's one other county here that has five JP's, all the other counties have four JP's. So one of the things that we, when we look at that to try to make a comparison is, we think you can look at the population per JP precinct, and in this particular case, excuse me, in this particular case, if you do that, you'll see that if you look at that Row 13, Column E, we actually have 65% less population per JP precinct as these other, other counties. Now, we happen to think our JP's are better than the other counties, so it's, it's okay with us that we would pay them more than these other counties. So if you look at... So, if you look at, if you look at F, again, on row thirteen, if you compare that, you see that our JP compensation is actually eighteen percent more than what these other counties pay. And if you look down below that for the 2019, now that was 2018. So, if you looked at fourteen below, it would actually be twenty-four percent more. So, so it is higher. And the way we look at this is, we would say, "Well, we think we're paying more. It's okay for the court. Court gets this information, it's okay for us to, to pay more." We're very fortunate to have the tax base that we do here in Chambers County. And, and that's why these numbers, if you look at our populations compared to, to the others, that, that we're very fortunate to be able to have the tax base that we have. So, we can have the budget that we, that we have. So, all we're trying to show here is that we think that the salaries that the county has established, that we had in 2018, are reasonable. We think that what we've done for 2019 is certainly reasonable. And while the thirty-seven fifty that we're talking about, the, the other elected officials that, that received that thirty-seven fifty, I mean, they're not here, they're not grieving. And the way we, we sort of look at it is, the, the constables asked for the thirty-seven fifty for these additional duties, and, and the county awarded that. And with that, I'll just ask if you have any, any questions.
These counties, they have same tax base that we in Chambers County.
They're, they're very similar, and that's why the budgets, because that's where the budget comes from. Is, is they'll look at the, the tax base. No, not, well, yes, you, you can look at both. But the tax bases are very similar on all of these. Now, we have, we have other counties that we've looked at. We've, I've even done a comparison again. I don't wanna overload you with information. But we've done a comparison with counties. So, we think our county's a little bit different than some of these counties. Because our county is next to Harris County. It's a very large county. Our county has an interstate highway running through it. Some of these counties that we're looking at on table one don't have that. And so, we also have done in past years, and I, I updated this year once I received the, the TAC information for 2018, on, on, on four counties. So, there would be four counties similar in size to Chambers County that are immediately next to a large metropolitan area. Some of these are next to Dallas-Fort Worth, San Antonio, and, and, and on those numbers, we, once again, if you compare the salaries that we're doing, we are well above them. We're thirty percent above generally what those other, other counties pay. So, so we, it's important for us to pay people fairly and properly. Part of this has to do with, and it's important particularly for Chambers County, because we're growing so much, there's a lot of demand for, for people. Salaries are going up, and jobs are plentiful. Yet, you can't, well, they're plentiful. Everybody's looking for someone. So, it's important for Chambers County to, to pay our officials so that you get good officials. And, and, and we believe that we're doing that. So, we, we think that the salaries that we've established and the basis for those salaries, we, we think is, is solid. So, thanks, thanks for your attention. Appreciate it.
All right, any questions? I'll leave you to the commissioner to speak. All right, who else do we have to speak? Commissioner George.
You want to go, Larry?
No, I'm. I'll let Larry wrap it up briefly.
Give this out. This may be a bag of, it's, it's the salaries for the last three years. And I tell you that we struggled with this. I thought we'd been on the court for four years. It's my last year. I was the no vote, I'm giving raises. Because what we've done in the past, we've had folks come to us and say, and grieve. We, we had one of five constables, one of, one of, one clerk, one district clerk, one whatever. And there's, and they grieve. So, you get a constable that grieves and said, "Hey, I, I issued three-hundred papers last week and the other constable didn't. But I want a raise." We'll give them a raise, we'll give that person a raise. And then the other constable will say, "Well, hey, you know, we might do three-hundred papers. We don't know what it's gonna be." So, so we try to find a system. You try to figure out, what's the best way to do this? So, what we did, we went in, we took two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties, we took that TAC information that Commissioner Sinat told you about, put it on the spreadsheet, and we did an average. We said, "What's the average judge make? What's the average commissioner make? What's the average county clerk make? What's the average district clerk? What's the constable, whatever?" And we get, we came up with numbers. And we were lucky, in Chambers County, we were a little high. And, and so, where do you go from there? So, what we did, we thought about, "Well, hey, let's, let's do, let's, let's institute a system that says, what percentage of those people, all the elected officials in the county, what percentage of the county judge are they?" So, some people may be eighty-five percent. Sheriff's are a hundred-one percent. County clerk might be eighty-five percent. The, the constables or the JPs may be seventy-five percent. So, we, we got that number. It's pretty easy. You just plug in all the numbers, you do an Excel sheet, and you say, "What, what's the percentage?" So, we came up with a number, said, "Well, that's pretty good." You know, the, the county judge in Chambers County, before Judge Sylvia was judge, had, had got the salary up a lot higher than the averages across the state. We couldn't help that, that was twenty years ago. So, that was our starting point. So, we took that number and we said, "Okay, what does the average sheriff make?" So, we had a, we had a percentage of sheriffs, so that's what we gave the sheriff. We had a percentage of what does the district court clerks. And, and they were all pretty equal. And Commissioner Sinat, he narrowed it down. He took and got, got counties that were very similar, but the numbers were pretty much the same. The averages were still the same. So, so we came up with what we thought was a pretty good system. The state is, is Commissioner Nelson told you earlier, every two years, the legislature meets and they determine what district court judges are gonna get salaries for the, for the state. So, that's a good number. That gets us out of it. You know, the state says, "Hey, cost of living in Texas is, is four percent, so everybody ought to get, or we're gonna give four percent." So, if, if we can afford four percent, we would do four percent. If we couldn't, if we can afford more, we'll talk about that. But we would do it every two years. So, that's how we got, we, we got to this system. So, last year, it took us about three years to get there. But last year, we determined what those differences, those percentage differences were gonna be. And that's what we voted on, and that's what we approved. And we said, "Okay, two years, we'll come back." So, this year, this year came up, and of course, the, the JPs wanted more money. Well, you know, my no was because, hey, it's a domino effect. Every blood warrant they sign, you know, increases the workload for the clerks, for the, for everybody. It, it impacts everybody in the county as the population grows. Their issue in, in, is the time that they have to do it. You know, Heather, when they did a blood search warrant, Heather doesn't have to come out here at two o'clock in Sunday morning and file anything or do anything with the court. So, so they, you know, they got, they got a valid complaint. But, that's part of the job. And I'll let, and I'll let Judge Pryor answer this question, 'cause, 'cause I really don't know the answer. But up until we, we changed the law last year that says our JPs can issue blood search warrants, before that, and before we had an attorney that was a judge in Baytown that was signing those things, I think JPs could do it.
No. No.
No.
No.
Okay.
Not legal.
So, never in this county has the JP, you think, to sign blood search warrants.
No. Blood search.
Let me kind of straighten that. We had one person other than the municipal judge, none of them district judge.
So, JP's has never been able to.
No.
So, so this is a, this is a new thing.
That's the, that's the.
I appreciate you stopping right there and saying that, because that is a slice in the bread right there. It's, that's what changes this whole spectrum, and it's.
Okay, it's not your turn yet. Finish what you.
Thank you. I yield back.
So, so they got, they've got more stuff to do. Well, every year, the legislature passes laws that we call unfunded mandates, that require counties to do things we didn't budget for, we didn't wanna do, or we didn't do before. And everybody has to do them. Sheriff's probably the biggest impact. I mean, we have, we have laws that are, that are in effect right now that Sheriff's Department has to comply with, that, that nobody even thought of five or six years ago. So, you know, we can't be doing this, in my opinion. We can't, we can't be just, just every year, or every time somebody has a complaint, look at it, look at this for a year. Look at it, see what the numbers are. You know, I don't, I hate to use the word fair, because it doesn't really exist. But, but we've got, we've got six, we've got six JPs. We've got three that pretty much have done, done most of the blood warrants since last November. Judge Mike Sylvia has probably done twenty-five or something.
Oh, no. Oh, him, yeah.
Yeah.
And him.
Yeah. And, and Yale, I mean, you've, you've done several. And Randy, Randy's not done any. Bob, have you done any?
Nope.
Tracy, have you done any? Okay. Well, you got folks that want thirty-seven hundred fifty dollars and haven't even done one.
Oh, oh.
God, let it finish.
So, so anyway, it's not, it's just.
You'll get your turn.
There's just not, there's not a good way to do this. And we think the sys, or I thought, the system that we had in place where evaluate it. Go for a year, look at, see how, see what the numbers are, and see who's done the most. And, you know, if we decide we wanna pay differentials to precincts.
It's tough. No, I'm just kidding. But the officer will call you and, uh, explain his situation to you. He'll email you the report on your iPad. You hang up from him, you read your report. If you see that you wanna do a blood warrant, or everything's there that you need to do the blood warrant, you sign it. You get it sent back to him. If the computer works right, maybe thirty minutes.
The county attorney office.
In April, I couldn't get anything to work right for me. And I spent one night, probably three or four hours trying to get one done. I drove to Stuckey's and signed it on the side of the road.
I said I wasn't gonna speak.
Yeah, you are.
For the permission. I've probably been woke up more times at two or three in the morning than anybody else in the last year as far as this room goes. And you're not just waking the judge up, you're waking the judge's wife up, and.
That ain't good.
So, is it two hours to get back to sleep? Is it three hours? It just depends. And if you get a call at eleven-thirty PM, and then another call at two-thirty AM, and another call at three-thirty AM, how much sleep? And it takes two full days for me to recover to where I feel normal again, you know, kind of a walking zombie. And I basically did that for month after month after month with no additional compensation. Now, the beautiful thing about the additional compensation is, I'm gonna get some help, and these other judges wanna get on board. But we're kinda back where we were before. The original thirty-seven fifty is like, there's no, they're gonna get, I'm gonna get thirty-seven fifty whether I wake up or not. And, you know, to me, it's a, it's a necessary evil. The necessary part is that, you know, DPS, law enforcement, they're putting their life on the line. Two in the morning, they make a DWI stop. And the necessary is, so we don't clog up the judicial system with unnecessary DWI trials. The evil part is that, well, how do they happen at two AM when the bars let out? And so, they're calling the judge at two AM, three AM. And, and every one of us in here have been directly impacted by drunk drivers. Either personally, or our family, or our friends. Somebody's been to jail, somebody's died, somebody's been mutilated by a drunk driver. And that's the end of the day. We're trying to get drunk drivers off the road. But I'll be honest with you, if there's no incentive for me to be woke up at two AM, I, I have dreams where my phone's ringing. I get up and answer my phone, it's not really ringing. I mean, I don't want you to feel sorry for me. I think I got a great job, best job in the world. I think I get compensated for it very, very fairly. But having said that, you know, the, by far the worst part of the job, two-thirty, three o'clock.
Larry did. A good job explaining it, Rusty did. But the point still is, we're in Chambers County today, this year, in eighteen, and we have a new job added to our job. Try that on, it's your job, and you'll see what I mean. They're not gonna give you more responsibility in most cases without giving you more money. But the point is, you heard the judge, who's suffered as much as anybody. On top of what he said, is all the other nights we get called out for warrants for arrests, and car accidents, shootings, murders, drownings, and all the other things that go on. And I don't have to tell not one of you over there that's been on the grand jury, that only sleepy people don't know what's going on in their community. You've been on the grand jury, if I understand, is that right? You've heard stuff you never dreamed probably was going on in your community, did you not? There you go. I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay.
And I appreciate you. We appreciate you very much for being here tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Judge, can I just ask for one clarification?
Yes, sir.
Is, so, when the legislature amended this statute, it does apply.
To allow JPs?
That to allow JPs to do blood warrants. It doesn't just apply to Chambers County. It does apply to other counties that fit within the parameters of what's in the statute, does it not?
Yes, the other county, the other JPs had the ability to sign a blood warrant, because if they did not have a, an attorney judge in their county.
That's correct.
And a lot of them didn't. And we had to have that exception, so our JPs could sign.
And glad to, and glad to. Just vote for us.
I'm gonna give you these.
Yeah, but we, we know who you sleep with.
I didn't make them sign it, you know, let them do it anonymously. First one says eighteen-seventy-five, all the way down. Second one's same, third one's same. Fourth one's same, fifth, sixth, so all of them say increase of eighteen-seventy-five. So, this will be considered at Commissioner's Court. What's that on the court? Twenty-fifth. So, if anybody'd like to be here, welcome to.
Okay, can I ask a question on the record? Is that, is that consideration for a raise like all the others, county officials, or is that for the blood warrants?
Well, my standard of what you grieved was over and above the thirty-seven fifty.
I grieved all of them, I mean.
You grieved over and above thirty-seven fifty?
Thirty-seven fifty and thirty-seven fifty, twice. That's what I grieved.
Yeah, but you got thirty-seven fifty, so you wouldn't.
I don't know what it was for, though, Judge.
Well, no matter, you got thirty-seven fifty, so you're grieving another thirty-seven fifty, the way I see it. And this will go toward that other thirty-seven fifty. You can't grieve something you got, whether you got it for blood warrants or.
I don't know what I got, though. Legally, I didn't know what I got. I didn't know if you were saying, "We don't care if you get paid for the blood warrants," first. And secondly, yes, we're giving it to you as a raise for everybody else. Hey, don't worry about it tonight. Just think about it. You'll see what, I won't.
It's been a long day.
Yeah, it has. It was a long night.
Yeah, but I would say, and important, some of the consideration was, give thirty-seven fifty, that's what they asked for.
It's in there.
Even though everybody else got, that's what you asked for.
I know.
And I didn't tell them that.
I know.
Stay there and there. Okay.
Okay.
We're done. Go home.
No, 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 that's quite long.
Yeah, so, so.
That's in the statute.
So, so the court adopted it last court. Every, every elected official gets thirty-seven fifty.
That's, that's my very question to you.
And that's it. So, 2019, everyone's getting thirty-seven fifty. So, now, now this is your time to grieve. You grieved, you said, "I wanted an extra thirty-seven fifty." Right about the best.
But I don't know for which ones, a problem.
No, I don't, I don't understand what you mean by.
We don't know if it's for blood warrants or if it's a raise.
It doesn't matter if you're a JP or clerk, whatever.
It does not as to us, because what we're doing extra.
No, wait. Every elected official in the county got thirty-seven fifty.
As a raise.
No matter what happens tonight, every elected official got thirty-seven fifty. You guys grieved that, that you wanted. You guys grieved that, that you wanted 3750 more, correct? That's what I got out of it.
No. We didn't, no. Nobody ever told us. We don't know if we're grieving for the warrants or if we're grieving for the raise. Nobody ever sent us.
You should have gotten your elected officials.
Right, I sent, sent a letter, right, saying, this is what you got. I didn't specify who for across the board raise.
That's correct.
Because it, it, everyone got 3750.
So, what do we grieve? Do we grieve that we didn't, we got boxed out of what every other elected official got? Do we grieve that? Or do we grieve that we, we wanted to get paid for the blood? That's all I'm saying, that was the whole crux of this. It was a simple question, two-step question, okay?
Well, the, the answer is, you got everyone for 2019 for 750, no matter what happened, okay? So, so when I sent that letter in.
So, we're not going to do any blood warrants, that's how, the whole thing is gone now.
No, the, the.
No, that's what we're saying.
Well, that's up to y'all, but I'm just saying, for 2019, when the adopted court was an extra 3750 across the board for all elected officials.
Okay. So, so are you saying that what they just said is not going back to court for a vote?
Yeah, they'll go back on court for.
So, the 3750 is not going back for a vote?
It's already there. It's already there. It's already there. Is that right?
No, but we weren't included in that.
Yeah, you weren't.
No, we, we're grieving that we were still allowing the 3750 for blood.
No, 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 Judge, you, you're getting the 3750 to serve the blood warrants. What you wanted was the 3750 that everybody else got for doing nothing.
We don't know, because we were never told what our 3750 represented. So, we have to grieve for all of it, okay? We weren't told that. We're not, we're not told that. We were cut out, we were cut. In other words, they.
The posting, do you have a posting of the salaries?
No, ma'am, I don't have it with me in cargo, but.
Okay, because it's, it hands y'all with your.
It has a 3750 raise.
It has your 3750 raise, the raise for doing the extra work.
That's right. Not the 3750 that all the other elected officials got. We didn't get that.
Right, and this is what they're saying, this committee is saying, you're not getting 3750, they're going to give you 1875.
Why you think I grieve the way I grieve?
No, 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 you're getting 3750 no matter what for 2019. This, this would, this would be for.
Well, the 3750 is paying for a job they y'all threw in their lap.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not getting a raise, they're going to hate.
We didn't get the raise.
They got increased work.
All the other elected officials, her and her husband, all, they all got it, we didn't get it.
Yes, and, and this is the.
We didn't get it.
Wait, wait a minute.
They just turned it down.
What they're saying is they're giving you half of the raise.
I don't care what it says, it's not 3750.
No, it's not, you're right.
And that's, that's all we wanted tonight, get paid for both. And again, listen, when this all sorted, nobody had to give anybody anything, he voted against all of it, he didn't want to give anybody anything.
I agree.
But the fact was, we still thought we had a chance to get our, remember, we walked in here asking for 3750 for doing a new job.
I remember, I was sitting right there.
That we'd never been required to do, that's what we wanted.
I understand.
And what happened, somebody come up with a wild idea over here, well, let's give everybody 3750. Is that not right, Larry? That's exactly.
Was that Gary Nelson, Commissioner Nelson came up with that idea?
Yes.
Yeah, Gloria has a better view than I do.
No, he, yes.
I think it, I think there was a.
And, and he explained it here, when he spoke today, he explained it, he didn't think it was fair, that, you know, a precinct's elected person should get more money than a.
It's not fair. You know why? We have the same jurisdiction as anybody else has. He's got countywide jurisdiction, I got it, he's got it. It doesn't matter if you're elected countywide or not, you are elected county. Why? You just don't have to run for the office in every precinct.
No, you know.
I just worked to death in his precinct.
Yes.
We all just worked to jail this weekend.
No, I, I understand, but I'm trying to.
We work all over the county.
To recap what Commissioner Nelson said tonight.
I, I get, I get out of hand, and I get very aggressive.
No, and I understand, but.
I don't mean to.
No, you're very passionate, and I like that.
And, you know, the thing about it is, your, your whole grievance was to get the 3750 as a raise like everybody else did.
Because if you don't, what does that say?
I don't disagree.
We're picking only these to get the raise.
I, I don't disagree.
And you know what a grievance is? That's exactly what a grievance is, right there.
Okay, so what's the next step?
It couldn't be more defined.
So, what's the next step?
You gave it to all these people, but you didn't give it to these people.
I agree.
If you specify this is for blood, we got roped out. You see the logic, Larry?
Yeah, I see, I see exactly what you're saying. I mean, I thought, I thought.
He thought that when he went in there.
I thought everybody got 3750, and you didn't get anything for blood work.
I don't know.
And then that's the grievance, is, hey, what should, this is what we want for blood work.
We started, we started with that. We didn't come in here for a raise, we come in here for that.
And then what, what I saw in the paper where they said, y'all asked for zero, or you could give zero to 3750, and they wrote 1875. So, I think that, that means they're giving you 1875 for the inconvenience of the blood